Okay, I'm ready to get the regular council meeting of June 22nd started. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll do roll call. Who is it?
Mayor Loughlin.
Here.
Councilperson Miller.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Goodweiler.
Here.
Stulman.
Here.
Sexton, absent.
Okay, we're gonna start off with the Chief's gonna give a presentation, Chief Horahan, on our use of force with the police, by the police department.
It's in the packet, but I didn't but they're looking at it.
Okay. My name is Mike Horahan, I'm with the West Branch Police Department. I just wanted to touch base and bring everyone up to speed on what the what the departments, what we're doing currently. First of all, I'd just like to mention, since I've been here in 2011, we have not had anyone injured in any kind of use of force situation, except for me. I was making a mental commitment and I got clobbered and broke a finger and that kind of stuff, so. But since I've been here in 2011, we haven't had anyone injured in kind of use of force situation. There's gonna be some upcoming changes in Iowa code and, but I just also wanted to pass on to you what we're doing here in West Branch Police Department. We are required to give 12 hours of continuing education to the police department. And sometimes we go over that. That is required by the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy. We've had training in use of force in the past. I'm in the process of updating that now to have my officers review the use of force policy. It's been a few years since we've done that, so we're gonna renew that this year. We've got weapons qualification coming up this month, where we're gonna be getting resurfaced by another weapons. Part of use of force, we're gonna tie in defensive tactics. Use of defensive tactics and that, that in that defensive tactics class, they discuss use of force. The proper techniques that you could use and the techniques that you don't wanna use when you're trying to make an arrest. Those are always good to review. We've had that training in the past, but we're gonna review it again. We thought it was important to revisit that. Mental health is required by the academy to get trained every annually on mental health and how to deal with mental health people and that kind of stuff. One of the things we've also done is there is a company called Police Legal Services. And we've contracted them to give us continuing education, their attorneys, and they're based out of Iowa. They are, have a digital plan, a lesson plan that we will take monthly, which will add to our current training scenarios that we're doing right now. It will be used partly to replace what we already have, but also in addition. Because I think one thing that's gonna be required in the future is a lot more documentation. We have it documented, but it just makes it easier to have an outside source that we work with annually to document a lot of that training. So anyway, we're gonna continue. One of the things the academy's gonna do is they're gonna kind of talk about de-escalation techniques and ways to diffuse a situation with mental health people or with people that may have issues with intoxication or whatever. A person might resist arrest, trying to think of good tactical ways to talk them into peacefully going. Where does that training come from? That's something we're waiting for from the academy. They're gonna dictate to us what they consider appropriate training and things like that. It's not necessarily anything new. De-escalation techniques have been used by crisis negotiators for years, which I'm a crisis negotiator, so it's not anything strange to me. But there's gonna, the academy's gonna come up with some training standards that we're gonna adapt and view. Do you guys have any questions at all?
You've been here since 2011.
Where does the time go? Seems like yesterday when I started, it's, 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 that's when I retired from patrol and I've been here ever since. It's been very rewarding, very great town to work in.
Is training required? You gotta, you gotta go somewhere to Des Moines or is that be done here?
Oh, for what kind of training? What kind of training? I'm sorry?
For de-escalation.
Uh, de-escalation? That's a good question. I'm gonna put together a de-escalation program myself. We're gonna, kind of, since I'm a crisis negotiator, I've got a pretty good handle on it already. But we're waiting for the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy to kind of dictate what kind of expectation. There's de-escalation classes going out in different places, not throughout the United States. It's not anything new. It would be kind of, and sometimes they call it different things, like, like for instance, we've received training on how to deal with mental ill. Mental ill, well, that kind of fits into how you deal with somebody that intoxicated or has mental health injuries. So it's not really new technology, it's just put a different package to it, a different name to it. But what probably will happen is, I suspect, is they will probably train instructors and you have to go in there and get trained, or they will do like they did with mental health. They will put together a program that you have to present to your law enforcement officers. And that's the part that I'm saying is, you know, a lot of, a lot of police agencies are looking at de-escalation techniques. A lot of them are just waiting to see on what that means and how to handle it. Some of it is, we're waiting to see what happens, but the other part of it is, I'm gonna move ahead with my own program in the meantime.
This is time to, it's a new, new world out there now. We're waking it up and
It's a new world. Yeah, things are changing and training is always a good thing. You know, and that's one thing that's going on, you know, United Stateswide. It's having other, even though we haven't had any, anyone injured as a result of the way we treated people in our community. But it's also a learning opportunity. You know, a training opportunity, something we have to strive for and continue to work towards. And it just reminds law enforcement agencies, we have to be engaged in our training and be active in.
Nothing else to remain. Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody comment? Anyone wishes to speak to us, they can address the council now. We won't take action, but we can hear you. Mary?
Yeah.
Keep it, keep it short.
You don't have to worry about it. I'd like to address the city council in regards to the COVID-19 situation and our small businesses in our own community here in town. And I've spoken with quite a few other people, owners of shops and that. And a few of them, I'm not certain they're going to be able to reopen. So I kind of thought, why can't we as a community kind of come together? And since we're all in this together, yeah, some type of a fundraiser for all of our businesses to help keep them afloat. Then I came up with the idea, here's just a suggestion. I remember, let's see, there was a person that I guess had cancer, there's several. You know, they always have fundraisers and that, but anyway, they raised money by having free will donation and kind of like a potluck. And people, if they wanna volunteer to make food and that. And then we did servers and I don't know how you feel about that.
Well, I think we're not gonna support that. I don't think the cities can't see us organize. I wish it would be a group of citizens that would do that instead of the CDG has already, I know, done some regularly, I know, for them, many of them. I'm just not sure what
Well, I'm No, I'm just No, I'm just saying that you have a very good idea. Several citizens in the community gather together and come up with a plan and present it to the city council and see if it would be approved. It's just, you know, with everything going on, I think it's really nice to show your support for your own community.
We would support that.
Thank you.
I know we would.
All right, thank you.
Consent agenda, need to approve the minutes of the last meeting of June 1st. Austin Finnegan to the West Branch Fire Department appointment. And the claims report. Motion someone. And then Nick and Tom. I have nothing to question in the claims. Any other questions? All right, let's vote.
Councilperson Goodweiler.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
All right, now we have some, the next three, maybe four, maybe five resolutions all pertain to the CDBG grant of $25,000 that the city hopefully will be receiving. And they require us to pass these resolutions as part of the federal guidelines, so we'll just kind of knock them off one by one, I hope. Run G1, Jerry. Resolution 1909, approving an excessive force policy.
That has to do with the CDBG's grant, it says support policy?
Yep.
Yeah, and the last one's even
Lots of strings.
Well, some of these, yeah, lots of strings. I get, is that a motion?
Sure.
Yeah, that's a motion. Tom will second. Any comments? All right, Leslie?
Councilperson Miller.
Oh, I do have a comment.
Okay.
So Chief, do you agree with our excessive force policy?
It is an existing use of force policy that we already have in our policy and procedure manual. It's just, they're just articulating this for this grant.
Okay, thank you.
That's an endorsement.
Yep.
All right. Go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
Sexton?
Yeah.
Stulman?
Yeah.
Okay, resolution 1910, approving an equal opportunity policy. Motion someone. Nick? Jody? This is a no-brainer. Any other comments? Leslie, go ahead.
Councilperson Goodweiler.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
All right. Resolution 1911, establishing a fair housing policy. Motion someone. Nick will second. This is probably something we don't have on record, but it's not a bad thing to have, so. Any comments? Okay, Leslie?
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Yes.
Stulman?
Yeah. Resolution 1912, establishing a code of conduct for administering federal grants, federal grant fund policy. Basically, we cannot do anything illegal. Motion? Tom and Jerry?
I just realized that.
You just realized that? Try not to do that. I try not to do that a lot. Yeah, we're not allowed to do anything, no fraud waste or abuse. Any other comments? Go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
All right, the last one is resolution 1913, approving a residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan. I don't know why this one's in here, but I need a motion. Jody? Second someone, Jerry will second. Apparently, some grants require relocation of people to redo some property.
We're just doing this as a food pantry.
Yeah, we're not relocating anybody, but this is just their standard.
Rehab or nothing like that.
We're checking their box.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Leslie, please.
Councilperson Stulman.
Yeah.
Sexton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Is Marty gonna be watching?
Uh, yes, well, he might go on Zoom.
Okay.
Well, I'm in here.
We're moving pretty fast. I told him to show up. Okay.
Well, did he text you?
Item six, regarding the recent findings of the city audit. So trying to find the summary here. I'm not reading the whole dang thing, 200 pages, 100 pages. Okay, we were flagged, I can't find it, but three things we were flagged on, and it's minor because we get flagged almost every year on the same thing. The fire department fund. The fire department association fund and the library fund.
The segregation of duties for those.
They say there's no real second set of eyes on those reconciling.
More reconciling of the bank.
There is reconciled. It's just I think it's within their, it's within their own organizations. And he, apparently the auditor doesn't like that. So I'm not sure what we can do about it, but other than have Gordon look at it once in a while.
Would it be? I don't know, I don't wanna meddle into anything.
I don't either.
Would it, would it be hard for the monthly for the, like you do a claims report, for the fire department to give the claims report report to the city council and we run it through our consent agenda and
It's really a bank reconciliation that they're looking for. Looking at comparing the book balance to the bank balance and just showing a reconciliation.
Yeah, they're not questioning any spending.
No, I don't, I don't know.
Kevin, I asked you to come, so.
The fire department really does, Jody and Tom have both seen it, so every check that's written by the fire department is signed, there's three people that can, every check has two signatures on it, for one thing. And then every month, Chad, Chad does our, our books stuff for the fire department. So every month, he shows the checks that were written and the income that came in. And it's on a document, he shows everybody at the fire department that. And after he shows it and talks about and reads every check that's written, all the income we've had, the department votes on, on that document saying, we approve it. So I, I mean, and I talked to Gordon today and thought, well, maybe we have to bring it up and let him look it over and, I mean, we'll do whatever it takes, but I don't be every month, or even when we're counting money during hometown days, there's at least two or three people counting money, just not one person in their account counting money. That's two or three people are handling the money, counting it, and so, you know, we try to do everything we can, I mean. And I don't know what the auditors want us to do more, I don't understand. I've explained it to them. Yes. I've explained it to them in the past and it just, I don't know.
So do they, are they giving, do they give you any suggestions on what they want you to do? Or they're just, they don't like the way you do it?
Well, I don't see, my conversation with Kevin, I, they don't, I don't see his, Kevin's work, I don't see the auditor's work. But the auditors say that they would like to see a bank reconciliation. I know what I do for a bank reconciliation. I'll be glad to help Chad do that if that makes the auditors happy. It's not, doesn't take very long and it shouldn't be any thing really more than what he's been doing. It's just showing what checks are outstanding, beginning balance, and it shouldn't take very long.
Kevin, do you guys do your own banking? I mean, you take all your money to go to the bank, none of it goes through the city?
Not, not the fundraising money and that kind of stuff. And we did have two, we did have two accounts, we're down to one account now, the foundation, the council account we have. We had two there for a while, so we're down to the one account too. We can do whatever we want, but we're we're already kind of, we're doing it.
Is that a private account? Literally a 501.
The auditors say because it's part of the city, somehow it's related and they have to look at it and comment. I'm no auditor.
And I talked to Gordon today, we don't have a problem with bringing it, Chad will get set up with him and figure it out. This has been going on for, and I've talked to him, I didn't talk to him this year, I've talked to him in the past. I know it's different people that come in here and it seems like they all do the same thing, so. Obviously, there's something that we need to do to make them happy, so.
Is there anything that happens to us if we don't comply? If we've been doing this for years, they don't, they don't fine us or nothing?
No, they, I
Just keep doing it the way we do it, hell.
We, we gotta write, we usually have to write something back and saying how we're gonna fix it or something and
Do it next year. I think the thing that the auditors, I believe, are concerned about, if somebody does something there at the fire department, the auditors will say, we told you, you should be doing something and you didn't do it, you're I've got a
I have some liability.
So if we just do what they say, then I think
They really haven't told us what we need to do, though, for sure.
To me, it's just
No, I did, when we sat here with him, when he said we needed, if you looked at it, that would satisfy it.
Somebody is worried. Chad's in charge of everything, so he gets receipts and he writes checks, so they're worried that he can write a check to somebody.
No, it has to take two signatures on that check.
I don't get it either.
Like I said, we're, every meeting, every month, we approve. All the checks have been written and all the incomes that's come in, so we're, at least we don't need to do it anyway, so.
That's the only way it makes sense to me.
I got a question, so is, is there a page that has a signature on it and a date when it's done for that month?
Um, there's a date on it, I don't know if anybody signed it.
Because I think maybe it might be as simple as just having the page with the signature.
I mean, it's got a date on that thing that he hands out, but I don't know.
I have not seen
I mean, the president could sign off on it or
Yeah, because I kind of do that.
Well, see, we're doing the same thing you guys do, basically, because they, they, you guys see what the bills are every month and checks move out, we're doing the same thing what you guys are doing. But do you sign off on it then?
It's a little piece of paper and maybe that's it.
But we'll, we'll work on it, so.
Okay. Yeah.
So Nick, that may pertain to you also at the library, the library board.
Uh, it's the, it's the Friends of the Library, again, separate 501(c)(3) organization that isn't, I mean, they, their goal is to benefit the library, but they're not they're not directly a part of the library. They've been very frustrated with the audit results because it's never been clear what they wanted done differently. As Kevin said, I mean, we, the Friends have multiple people check off on everything and the same result keeps coming back, so they're not sure what to do. So last year, we were trying to iron it out and, and the auditor just said, just put the same response, it's fine.
Yeah, maybe this is the one little thing we let them find. Well, like a billion inspection, they gotta find something.
The other thing, they commented on being over budget, you know. Bond, we're spending over $100 over budget.
Yeah, that was, that was an oversight.
That was my, my fault.
Could that come out of your check? Okay, so I guess we need to let's try it, let's try something different and see what happens. Let's just try something different.
I bet you I'll show you the sheet that I do and probably look at it.
Let's just make it as simple as possible, but something different. Okay, let's move on. Hoover Hometown Days, resolution 1914. To continue with Hoover Hometown Days or to cancel Hoover Hometown Days, so the actual resolution says canceling the Hoover Hometown Days event, including the fireworks display. Let's go with that official resolution, resolution 1914. Give me a motion someone.
Motion.
Tom will motion. I'll second. Jerry will second. I guess this is the thing we need to do, so I'm okay with it.
It's unfortunate because some of these other cities are still having their
Their parties?
Yeah. Corvus, isn't it Corvus that's having their
The fireworks.
We're just doing, just doing the fireworks, but we have, we have parking lots for people that stretch for research park, Hy-Vee, everything out there, there, we got thousands of spots out there for people to park.
Fireworks.
Yeah, but you drive in and that's it, everything else has been canceled.
Right now, I don't feel like messing, that's what I thought we could do, but I just don't, I'm giving up on it.
I guess I'm not saying that we should just have the fireworks, I'm saying it's too bad that we just can't have Hometown Days. We can't have that, nobody, you know, nobody can there's no other events going on during the Hoover days, then.
Well, that means everybody's coming to town, well, yeah, we just can't be liable for people coming to town. You can't have a lot of people gathering.
We have a softball tournament.
We didn't organize that. Did I get a motion on this?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All right, Leslie, let's vote.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Okay, so that's official. Hometown Days is canceled. Resolution 1915, hiring Kathy Steen as a full-time police officer for the West Branch Police Force and setting the hourly wage for the position. Do I have a motion? Tom and Jody? Okay, it's time, get her on, I guess. Any other discussion? Okay.
That salary puts her
At that salary, right.
Still be a sergeant?
No. Just be a regular patrolman.
Oh.
Basically, this is she was gonna come on full-time when Mike retired and I think we set a start date of October 1st, was that it?
I know that was proposed by the finance people because of budget reasons, but I think since then, people think we should hire July 1st.
This would give her a three-month earlier start date for full-time, she's already working 75% and as we said at the last meeting, those funds from Hoover Days part of it could be used to fund her salary.
My question is, is her early employment coming out of the police budget?
Yes, it's budgeted.
Okay.
I was just more, I was asking if that was a fair wage for her. I don't hire a lot of police officers, so I was just wondering for somebody with as much experience as she had.
Uh, we've offered her a full-time position here so before, and this is the time we're gonna offer to her again. And I think we talked about it and we thought there was a good starting salary. Uh, there's always a chance for promotion and, uh, more money to come in. A lot of people aren't aware of it, but, uh, we're also gonna use Kathy as, uh, uh, sex abuse investigator, domestic violence investigator. Uh, she's trained in those areas. Also crisis, she's been, uh, trained in crisis intervention as well as school resource officer. Also, she's gonna cover shifts that we don't currently have covered. Um, and so she'll help out with that. Anything else?
Mike, where are we at with her, with the school and and, uh, schools contributing to her ten hours? We still at ten?
I had approached the school, uh, and told them that we're gonna be putting her on full-time and I asked them if they'd be willing to, uh, split the difference. And the school and the business, uh, and the budget process, they're really not sure what's happening themselves with them. The school's gonna start, doesn't start or will start. Uh, they really like Kathy. Uh, they wanna keep her and they would love to contribute more, but they, they don't know if budget-wise, uh, they would able to do that. Uh, they, uh, I talked to Marty and he said they are willing to, um, still cover her ten hours, uh, during, for her prior or for our current, um, where our current agreement was. And so we'll still continue to get that ten hours. Um, at least that's my understanding.
Yeah. With the unknown right now, their legislature, cause you're hearing ten percent across the board, that's potentially, we just gotta see what, what really happens. We, we talked already back in February, March, at that point in time. Would stay something the way it was, it was looking promising then. In Democrats and then you started seeing shortcuts. So we're willing to, if, if the budget gets figured out, you know, and things starting to straighten out, we're definitely going to go more because I know.
During our budget, past budget, we had it budgeted for thirty overtime hours, uh, for Kathy or in part-time employees. So we were able to use her in those capacities. And that part of that is being used to cover her salary, uh, now. Um, so, uh, uh, and actually, you know, she spent, you know, the original agreement was we would give them ten hours in school. The school had paid ten hours, but what ended up happening last year was such a great success. And, and there's so many things that she got involved in. It was closer to working in the school thirty hours. Um, but since then, we've trained her up to be, um, she was always very smart, but, uh, we sent her into training on domestic violence and sex abuse investigation and and how to be a, a support to victims and that kind of stuff. That's, that's something that was long overdue and it's something I'm really welcoming in the department because not that, that we're relaxing necessarily, but something we can do better.
I think this is great. She's very popular and we need to keep her around.
It is kind of interesting. I'll drive around town and people wave at me and be real excited and they'll see us, me and not Kathy.
Okay, any other comments? We have a motion to approve the hiring of Kathy Steen as a full-time officer. Uh, go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, um, Resolution 1908. Approving the West Branch High School softball parking lot site plan for resurfacing. Give me a motion, someone.
Make a motion.
Tom Dean and Nick will second. Okay, um, failed this last time. I'm not sure why, but I think we, Tom's given a second thought. Maybe we all have.
Well, it, it really brought into clarity my concerns and, and, you know, we had a real productive meeting with the school and their engineer and they kind of discussed, you know, the new entrance. And my biggest concern was backing up the traffic on West Main Street if they were to come in and turn left. And the superintendent has assured me and I have all the faith in this assurance that if it is a problem, they will make appropriate adjustments.
Yeah, and the same as they always have. Any other comments? Okay, um, we're gonna go ahead and vote. Let's vote, Leslie.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
Miller.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
All right. Okay, thanks for coming, Marty. Resolution, God, we're flying tonight. Weather's slowing down. Um, I'm ending the city of West Branch sick leave policy. Sorry about that. So what's our resolution? This is a little confusing to me. Um, put on your desk before you guys, a breakdown of a proposal that really only changes two things. And what it adds is no annual payout for hours not used greater than five hundred and sixty hours. So an employee can accrue five hundred and sixty. It would take almost six years if they never call in sick. Currently, we pay out for that. We give them a check at the end of the year.
October.
October.
It's for fifty percent of the hours that exceed five, six. So the maximum to be is forty-eight hours.
Okay.
Or twenty-five percent.
Or twenty-five based on when they started.
Based on your year.
Okay, so that's one change that's being proposed. So we can decide on that, yes or no. The other change would be maternity, paternity leave.
And the new employee.
For everybody?
New, new employee.
Uh, oh, the other change, the third change would be new employees will not be eligible for the sick leave payout at retirement. That we currently pay out. It's either fifty percent or twenty-five percent depending on how long you've been. So there's three changes proposed. I don't know how to put that in this resolution here, cause how to offer it as a resolution.
I think it might just be as amended because, uh, I don't believe, I don't know, look at it. It might have been changed since.
Well, there is a resolution nineteen oh six.
Yeah, let me look at that.
I think you should look at that, see what it says.
Five sixty hours. Payout would only occur for employees at retirement.
The way it's worded, it says new employees can only accrue up to ninety, ninety-six hours a year.
Not the five hundred and sixty.
Five hundred and sixty of the year over here.
Yeah, ninety-six hours a year is.
Yeah, the resolution on item number one says these hours will not roll over from year to year. So I think my desire might be to strike that out. We do want it to roll over to accrue up to five hundred and sixty.
For new, for new employees?
Everybody.
For everybody?
Everybody, just like it is now.
They don't get no payout after five sixty.
Any brand new.
So new employees wouldn't get any payout even, including the five sixty.
That's when they retire.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
They can get up to five sixty, but they don't get any payout there.
They don't get any payout, okay.
So the way I was, all were at retirement. The way I'm reading that is if a new employee they're hired tomorrow, they can accrue to that five hundred and sixty. They, their employment here till they retire. More likely, cause they're not gonna get paid that five hundred and sixty hours of payout, they're gonna, they're gonna virtually take sick pay. Will they be eligible to just take sick pay? So they could just virtually take four months, five months off.
Okay, they can't do that for vacation.
It's not leave, it's, if you or a family member is sick.
You can ask.
So virtually we're encouraging them to use it yearly.
Unfortunately, that.
That's why we have disciplinary procedures if they use and abuse it and, and they're in dis- disciplinary problems. Well, you're shooting yourself in the foot though, cause if you use it instead of letting it accumulate, then when you need it, what's gonna happen?
When you get to the, when you get to retirement age, may, may need to be.
Bring it here.
Well, just, just keep in mind, the reason why the hours were important is not necessarily for the employee because you do have short-term and long-term disability for them. But for family members that they might have to attend to, that's where the, that's where the vulnerability would be. So in the, in the sense of what you're talking about with hours, you create maybe an incentive for, for people to abuse. They still would have to have a reason why they're using that time and, um, and then obviously, like we talked about, if they're being abused, then it becomes part of a disciplinary.
Do we have a limit on how many days they can be sick before they have to have a doctor's?
We can put a limit on it. We do not presently have.
I guess what I'm saying is somebody, I mean, if we, let's say we put three days on there. If you're sick for three days, which, you know, could easily happen. You don't have to have a doctor's appointment or doctors, you know. So virtually every week, you could take three days off every week, but you're sick every week. I have to.
The employer. The employer has the per, he said anytime, would not, a limit on there, just for what Jerry's suggesting. They're saying they get three freebies. It doesn't mean we're gonna ask for a doctor's appointment for one day.
Yeah, uh, you, you broke up a little bit, Kevin. I don't think they heard your whole sentence.
Uh, the employer has the right to ask for a doctor's excuse at any time. So I don't think we should say, you know, say we're going to ask for it after three days, just as Jerry had said, you know, that's kind of setting yourself up for that. I was sick for two days. I'm not gonna ask. So I think we, I think we just say we can ask for it. Doesn't mean.
Okay, I did, I would just try to, try to put a scenario out there that could actually happen.
Yeah.
Trying to break this down, there's like three different decisions we gotta make. I think we're all in agreement that we're gonna end the payout at retirement for any new employee. Are we all in agreement with that?
Yes.
So Roger, just to make sure I understand, so no payout after five sixty for any employee?
No.
Only at retirement. At retirement.
Yeah, no, no annual payout.
After over, over.
Okay.
Decision number two.
So you said no payout at retirement and that's for anyone hired from July first.
January first.
Before that, it's grandfather.
Yes.
Okay, twenty-five.
Everybody, whoever's grandfather now is your.
Let's, let's get her on the table right now. Cause she's gonna be hired July one.
Well, if this is in place July one, then she doesn't get a payout.
Yeah. Let's make it July second.
If we could work it, I'm fine with that.
She was already an employee in the city.
Not a full-time employee, only full-time employees.
I was gonna say December thirty-first or, or, or January first. We're gonna hire two new people. The hiring date?
Well, yeah, what, you're saying that, who, who gets a payout because that's, that's contentious area.
We want her to have been hired June thirty-first. Hire June thirty-first.
I personally don't know why we're paying out. Normally, I've never known.
You, you just, you can make the effective date whenever you want to, when you want this to be started, so.
Yeah, we could.
Yeah.
August first.
It could be. That's.
Okay, so back to the original question. Sounds like we want to eliminate the, the retirement big payout.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Next question. Every October we're paying out, if you're over five hundred and sixty hours.
Correct.
Whatever an employee has, if they got five hundred and seventy hours, they got ten hours that they have not used.
Yes.
Yes.
That's ten hours. We're taking, we're paying fifty percent of that.
Or twenty-five.
Or twenty-five depending on when they started.
Get rid of that. Do, are we keeping that or getting rid of that?
I say get rid of it. I can, I, I don't.
Want to know how much it cost us. I can just tell you. The past five years, in twenty fifteen, the taxes and everything for three employees was two thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars. In twenty sixteen, for three people, it was one thousand eight dollars. In twenty seventeen, for three people, nine hundred seventy-five dollars. Twenty eighteen, for two people, one thousand seven hundred eighteen. And in twenty nineteen, it was two thousand six hundred and ninety-one for three people.
One to two thousand dollars a year.
That's total pay for whatever number of people. It was but in the future, I calculated some maximums and it's going to the maximum. That is, if they all take forty-eight hours of pay. The amounts would be like three thousand, three hundred, three thousand, seven hundred, five thousand, one thirty. That's the max. For three, three and six. But.
And the, and the, the other thing you gotta think about, it's the longer, longer they're employed, the more their, their, um, wage goes up, the more they're gonna when they go over, the more they're gonna get paid. So those first five numbers you gave us are gonna increase properly.
Yeah, the one thing, if you wanted to do it, you could put a max and say the maximum amount anybody gets is five hundred dollars per year for this payout, if you want to continue it. If you don't want to continue it, you don't have to worry about it. But that is an alternative allowing them to collect whatever their rate is times those hours.
So typically, three employees are using that per year or is that three different employees each year or?
Yeah, well, once you get to five sixty, unless you have a, an event that takes you way under the five sixty, most people aren't, are not using ninety-six hours a year that they are receiving.
That's what I.
So, so here's an idea. Beans, we're gonna give you a short-term and long-term and the city's paying for it. Ninety-six hours is twelve days. Holds twelve days a year, right? So at the end of the year, whatever you haven't used over that ninety-six hours, why don't we just pay that out and there's no carryover? You're covered because you have short-term and long-term disability.
Well, that doesn't.
So why do you need that?
Pay if they're sick for, they need that five hundred hours sometimes. Sometimes they may need that over, they need to roll it over. They need, someone might need that, not. But that doesn't pay, it doesn't make them whole. That's only sixty percent.
That's that too.
So they're losing.
There's a couple of vulnerabilities, one is, if, if there's a family member, your, your wife gets cancer, and you have to be there for her, short-term, long-term disability is not gonna help you, not gonna help you in that situation.
I think the.
Only healthy if I get the cancer, and I'm the employee, it helps with my situation, but if I have to use typical medical leave act type of things, then you don't, you don't have coverage. Well, we should be, we should be fighting to get better coverage for you, I mean, I don't know. You know, I mean, I just think that's just the way that the public, at least the public sector.
Build up is good, that, that's, keeps, it's a sense of security.
Five hundred and sixty hours.
So, so I start working here, and I got, I earned my ninety-six hours, didn't use any of it. At the end of the year, since it just started, my ninety-six hours goes to my bank, I don't get paid out anything. I don't start getting paid out a percentage until my five sixty reaches its max.
That's the way it is now.
That's the way, yeah, I don't think that's unreasonable. I mean, I, I don't think that's unreasonable. If you, if a guy doesn't call in sick and he gets it, it goes all the way up to five sixty, well, then, then what, what's gonna happen? He's either gonna start using sick time, because it's not gonna, it's not gonna roll over, and he's not gonna, he's not gonna get to use it, or you pay him a fraction of what it's actually worth, and he comes to work. I mean.
Right?
Good off paying him, it's, doesn't matter to us.
Because we're not, we, we pay him, is it half of?
I, I was thinking we'd pay half of whatever if they exceed.
Right.
Maximum.
If we were hired before two thousand, but we were hired like in two thousand fourteen, nine to forty-five percent.
Okay, so you get a quarter of it, so, the best you're gonna come out with is three days' pay.
And then new people would get it at all.
As if you don't call sick.
Yeah.
And then new people would get it at all.
No, no, yeah.
It'll take six years to build up.
Yeah.
Almost five and a half.
Yeah, they wouldn't get it until they've got to the five sixty.
Five twenty-eight, three. Yeah.
This is a yearly payout.
Yeah.
Okay, what's wrong with the plan we have now then?
So. Why are we even talking about it if we're not gonna change it? We're, we are, we're the only.
I don't get why, I mean, they're already getting, if they're not using ninety-six hours, they're already getting it, I don't understand why we're giving them a triple benefit to not be sick. What kind of worker, I mean, I, I understand your point, but if they're not using sick time and they're here sick, what kind of work are you getting out of those people, I mean? I mean, I can, I can sit in my office at work with the flu, but it doesn't seem to be getting anything done. But I mean, that's why I get sick time, is to use it, and we're sitting here talking about how many people are banking that much money, or not that much money, but banking that much sick time, ninety-six hours, as far as I'm concerned, we're giving them more than enough sick time, why are we paying for them to not use it? Even if it is a little bit, and if we're gonna get another eight thousand dollar expense to give them short-term and long-term disability, that two to three thousand dollars a year would really help pay for that eight thousand we're about to.
Okay, so you're lobbying against the annual payout.
Yeah.
Above five sixty. And.
Me too.
Trying to narrow this down to easy decisions.
Because we're already giving them an eight thousand dollar benefit for everybody. Why do they need? I'm with them too, but I wanna, I wanna clarify, so when somebody gets to the five sixty, that's the max, they, they can't bank anymore, they're never gonna get anymore.
But they go over that year, here, well, right now, they don't.
What I'm saying is.
What the proposal? Yeah.
When they get to five sixty, that's their, that's their max.
Stops the crew.
Stops right there.
Stops the crew.
If they don't use it, that's all they're ever gonna get.
Then each year, they use, whatever they use, if they use up to ninety-six hours, they'd get that.
Yeah, go back up to five sixty. Right. But if, if they, they don't use any sick time, they're not gonna occur that ninety-six hours a year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Want to clarify that. Five hundred and sixty hours is fourteen weeks. Forty hours a week.
Why don't we just pay them for everything?
Well, I don't think that you're gonna have that many people use the sick leave if you have.
No, I'm just saying that's how many, that's how many.
Exactly, that's, that's, Gordon, that's exactly what I'm saying. We don't have people using sick time. They're not abusing it, they're not using it. Why do, why do they feel that they have to have this huge bank?
Well, we had a person use it.
Catastrophic.
And, and. We have had a person use it. And we're.
Kids, keep people with kids.
Well, I can't predict everything, I mean, welcome to the world. You can't predict everything. I, I, I'm having a hard time understanding this.
Two items, no annual payout at retirement. No annual payout.
No annual.
For new employees, new employees.
Oh, okay, for new employees.
No annual payout when they retire for new employees.
And no annual payout at the end of the year, above five sixty. Okay?
And you had the five sixties your max.
Trying to narrow it down.
Five sixties max.
Um.
I'd just like to say a thing, I, I put a bullet in there on maternity and paternity leave.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Let's add that.
We have maternity, paternity.
Yes.
Don't have to argue with it.
No, you don't have to argue with me on that one.
Leslie.
I have a question, because I added that on the survey as well, because if we change nothing, that's one thing we should add.
Right.
Is maternity, but generally maternity is gonna be covered under short-term disability. That's usually a covered benefit, we can verify that, so you wouldn't need to add that if you give short-term disability.
The only thing is.
Well, I'm, I'm adding significant others for.
Yeah, because that's the only.
So you're adding maternity.
Right, because S and D will not cover male.
And included option too.
And October first, all federal employees will have this, so this is coming.
So what kind of agreement to add maternity?
Is this on top of their five sixty?
Yeah.
Do they have to use their accruals?
Gotta have a baby, son.
Yeah.
This is virtually for somebody that's not been here for five years and having to get any. At the same time, you can't use sick time.
That needs to be noted then, because at, at this point right now, you're, you're giving them eight hundred hours.
Yeah, but you can't use sick time. I can't say, hey, my wife had a baby, she's sick, I mean, sick time, it's not sick time. My wife have a baby, I can't use my sick time, because she's not sick.
Correct.
Actually, you can use your sick time if you or your loved one is sick.
My pregnant wife isn't sick, she's pregnant.
Wait, if you, if you need eight hundred hours, something happened. If you use eight hundred hours, something happened.
Yeah, but I'm just, you know, but yeah, but it's gotta be, yeah, that's gotta be something detrimental, but her having a baby, the baby being home, or the baby being fine, she's not sick, I can't use sick. So this is what maternity and paternity means. So you're not considered ill.
I don't, I'm not against this two forty, but I think if you have five hundred and sixty hours, this two forty needs to come out of your five sixty. And, you know, basically, we give everybody two hundred and forty hours of maternity, paternity leave. But it comes out of your accrued, accrued sick leave.
And if you don't have.
But if you don't have it, then, then that's where we eat this. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Sick leave must be used first.
Yeah. Yep.
Can you do that, Kevin?
Because it's sick leave, I didn't know you could use, I can't use sick leave at my job if my wife's pregnant, because she's not sick, and neither am I.
It's different, the pregnant person though, Nick.
That's what I'm asking.
But not for the father, not for the paternal.
You, Nick, you can use sick leave, I agree, I agree with you.
You can.
Because you're not sick.
So, so Kevin, let, let me, I guess what I'm hearing is, does the Family Medical Leave Act provide leave for the father? And is he allowed to use his sick leave as that leave?
I believe he can, uh, number one, he, he is allowed to use FMLA for leave, I don't believe he can use time for leave though, as, as the paternal parent.
I thought.
I will double check on that, but I'm.
I can use that. The family leave allows them to be gone on an unpaid, unpaid leave.
That's what it is.
Correct, unpaid.
Yeah, I can use FMLA, you can use FMLA for up to four to five weeks, but it's unpaid, I can't use my sick time.
Yes.
But that's up to, that's up to the employer, or is that a, is, how's that work? I, I thought that's up to the employer.
FMLA?
To allow, to allow that leave to be accrued leave.
Well, I guess from my standpoint, I, I don't think you, if, I guess the employer could make that rule if they wanted to, you, the, the only belief he's guaranteed is the unpaid leave.
By the FMLA.
Yeah, so the job protection is there.
We don't know.
And I, I think it's up to the employer to provide above that, but we can check into that.
Because now, the guys, this is.
Typically.
We're gonna give them five hundred, let them accrue five hundred and sixty, then we're gonna throw another two hundred and forty hours on it, and now we're gonna buy them short-term and long-term disability to boot. Okay, well, strike that, and we'll come back at another.
Some of these cities have nine hundred and sixty hours, seven hundred and twenty hours, eight hundred.
And, oh. I think we're forgetting.
But nobody is offering what we're offering.
We're a small town of the.
I'm telling you, I've gone through, nobody is offering what we're offering, we are offering better than what anybody else here is as a package, as a whole.
Well, if we're paying short-term, long-term, you are.
Okay, we just made two decisions about the payouts, I think we came to decision on that. Maternity, paternity, is that our last thing we need to decide?
I don't think I'm ramping it on about having babies.
The maternity leave, we can check with the short-term disability company and make sure that they, our maternity benefits are paid as short-term disability for a new hire.
They are, my wife used it when we had ours.
Yeah.
I would assume that.
But not for fathers.
Not for fathers.
Well, what's, what's the?
Um. Vacation time, how's that occur?
Well.
You can.
They get, well, it varies by length of time you've been here, how much vacation you get, but there is a maximum you can get of two hundred and forty hours. When you get to that level, and you don't use it, you lose it. Which.
How many, how many hours a year does an employee get for vacation time?
Well, it depends on how long you've been here.
Longevity is a piece of it, that's why.
I understand that.
You have about two weeks, or one week.
Two weeks for up to five years, after five years is four point nine two, and we had this question last season, I think it's like at ten years, it's seven point seven hours per pay. And then that, that's, that's the max, and then it's just.
But you still only get two hundred and forty maximum.
It caps it.
So, I guess, I guess what I'm getting at is every pay period, you're, you're occurring vacation time that could be used for paternity as you occur.
Yeah, well.
To two hundred and forty hours.
The, the, it just takes a while if you don't take vacation the first year to, to get, you know.
Sure.
But.
Well, paternity should be a foreseen thing, or a planned thing, not a.
Well, even if it's not, even if it's not planned, you got nine months to let your employer know.
In nine months.
It's not a surprise, or it could be, depending on your situation, I guess, surprise.
In nine months, you can accumulate, well, we're gonna give you twelve sick days, and we're close to that, and, and a three or four day vacation days, I mean, so you're, you're gonna get to take a week off.
The only reason I see the advantage is typically your public sector, despite, even by our own, is getting a lot better benefits this way than your private sector is.
Expect results.
Yes, but at the same time, even in my private sector job, I still have sick leave, not as much as this in vacation, and even in the private sector, which generally lacks behind the public, still get maternity, maternity, paternity leave. I mean, it's almost an expectation that most companies are moving towards now is maternity and paternity leave policies. That makes any difference to anybody. So, like you said, the states move into it, because it's becoming an expectation.
How can we move forward without no, no paternity policy, I just don't know how we can. We have to have some sort of policy.
We don't, we don't have one.
We don't have one now.
I know, we have that one.
I don't know. Let me go back, I'll tell you, table, table this, I'll go back and read what the federal one is, and how, you know, it goes into effect October first.
Feds have an unlimited checkbook.
Right.
Because they keep writing checks.
They get the running deficit, we don't get to do that.
Yeah. And at the same time, I mean, how many, we're talking, we're talking like everybody starts to have like eight kids, starts abusing maternity, paternity leave, they're gonna have, I think.
They're gonna have bigger problems.
They're gonna be using a lot of, they're gonna be using a lot of sick time, it'll solve that problem we have there with that amount, but it's just, I don't think maternity, paternity leave is gonna be a raft of issues, you might have maybe one person within, maybe two, I don't know, I don't have that many employees that you wouldn't think, you'd have six people all, use it all one year. Okay. So I mean, it's just one of those things where you might run into it.
So it sounded like Coke's idea was the closest to having support on the paternity, where you would use your sick leave first, and, and the two forty would be within the five sixty.
Right, that, I mean, that was, we'll give you up to two hundred and forty hours, but you have to use your sick leave first.
But your sick leave can't be used.
This is for the.
We can make it any way we want.
This is for the maternity.
So the father could use sick leave.
Right.
Call it paternity leave.
That's right.
But he has it particularly first, when that dries up, when that runs out, he may have a hundred more hours of eternity leave we could offer.
And when you do, and he's sick.
Too bad, so sad.
Yeah.
Leslie.
Twenty years ago, when, when the government first decided to offer paternity leave, I worked for a company that offered it, it was two weeks, it wasn't six weeks, the mother got six weeks, but the husband, he only got two weeks. So we're not talking, so it wouldn't be two hundred and forty hours, because that's a lot of time for them, I'm sorry, he can do all the work. But anyway, it was two weeks, so if you think about a paternity policy, and again, two weeks, you would have time to plan for, and you would probably be able to save ten days.
Yeah, good point, you got nine, you had. I was just gonna say, you got plenty of time, you got plenty of time to make up for somebody saying, hey, my wife's due August sixth, and if you know that, whoever the chief, or whoever's the administrator.
But it wasn't date.
Can say, hey.
Didn't get six weeks.
We're gonna cover these hours with other people. And you got big.
I mean.
So again, it goes back, it goes back to whatever this mandate is, you know, I guess we have to follow state mandate.
But right now, medical, family, family medical leave act, the time is the same between mother and father.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
But typically, you can use short-term.
So the sick leave. If you're the mother, you get to use it, yeah.
Papa do not.
Okay, um, we gotta come to a conclusion on this somehow, or we've been talking about this for a month and a half.
I mean, the only, the only issue I have, and I'll just lay it out there, with making them use sick time before maternity, paternity leave is. I mean.
I think that's a decent proposal.
I'm not a fan, but that's me. They're supposed to use sick time when you're sick, not supposed to use sick time so you can spend time with your family, that you just had a baby.
Well, I'm against the two forty for sure.
I don't think it needs to be that high, but I'm just saying that they should get something and not have to use sick time, because God forbid somebody spends time with their newborn child, and then gets sick three weeks later, and then doesn't have any sick time, because they wanna spend time with their family.
Half that amount, one twenty, that's three weeks.
I mean, wherever we land on, I just don't think it should come out of their sick time, because I don't think we should punish people for wanting to spend time with a newborn child.
Well, then they can take advantage of their vacation time.
But is that too, then?
That's.
But I'm just saying, the world's moving, the world's moving towards maternity.
You got nine months to plan. You get ten days.
I know, but I'm just saying, that's where the world's moving to, regardless of people wanting to deny it or not, that's where it's going. Because you get sick time, vacation time, and maternity, that is where it's going, I mean, the state is about to make it official.
So what would be your proposal for maternity? What's your proposal?
I'm not saying it needs to be two four, two forty, I mean, we can come to a conclusion on hours, I just don't think it should.
If it were like half that, one twenty, that's three weeks. You can, yes.
Okay, so.
That's three weeks.
Let me put this. So your wife become bedridden because of whatever that's called, I can't remember. The last month or two, what's it called?
Covid nineteen?
So she becomes veteran, so you gotta stay home and take care of the kids. What's that come out of?
Now ill.
That comes out of sick pay.
Yes, she's now ill.
I'd say so, yeah.
Yeah, being pregnancy is not an illness, but that is an illness, that is an aftereffect, that is sick.
There you go, that's what it's called.
Who's got any proposal then for maternity?
Okay, so that comes out of your sick bank.
We could wrap this up tonight.
And that and that would be the same way in most policies anywhere else.
Same thing, that's an illness.
Paternity leave is just, it's meant to be spent time with your family and your child.
No, there's about six different options that have been thrown out there. And if you wanna keep it simple, I say.
This isn't as simple at all.
No, I say. Two hundred and forty hours is six weeks, and if you wanna cut down on the paternity, well, you could do that. But, you know, Leslie brought up a good point. Saying if they get a new employee and. Young lady, she wants to start a family, and she comes in, she won't have any sick time to take, and. Again, the federal government, October first, they're giving two hundred and forty hours of maternity and paternity leave. And. I do believe that will, it will come to that sooner sooner rather than later. Tom, do they have to use their sick leave in their?
See, I, I don't know.
That's a big deal. I mean, wouldn't that be weird if we were offering better benefits than the federal government? Because we didn't know what they were, what they were doing. Now, I know the university, when my wife had hurt kids, they gave her six weeks of. Paternity leave, and that didn't go against her sick leave.
My companies, I work for now, it's the same. My wife has a baby, I get four weeks.
You get four.
Four. She gets four, if she worked there, she'd get four.
Yeah, I don't know. You know, six weeks of maternity leave. I think. Two weeks of paternity leave would be, I don't, I guess. I've never been in the situation and I don't plan on ever being in it, so.
That's what you're gonna run into is discrimination.
They have to be the same.
But it's not the same. The white, the lady does not go through the same thing the man does.
Could be way more emotional for him.
We're not having that argument.
No, but that's, that's the thing. I mean, you're coming, you run into discrimination, you run into the discrimination law and all that.
Yeah, they have to be the same.
As soon as you start differentiating between. Discrimination, I agree.
So we were doing great until we came to this, uh, the baby thing. My proposal would be a hundred and twenty hours for both. Paternity, paternity. I like that.
Hundred and twenty.
They can use vacation time, or they could, if it's allowed, they could use sick time, particularly the.
So would you be willing to let the mother use sick leave?
A lot of times what happens.
In addition to that.
To use maternity leave, and then if you're gone longer than that, you can use S and D. You can use your maternity leave first, and then you can start using your short term disability.
Well, that figures out how you get paid, but it's not a sickness, right? Isn't that what you said? Having a baby's not a sickness.
Not, but short term disability is different.
So the women that would have a baby regularly, you'd get six weeks off, but they wanted to take twelve weeks. They would use their short term disability and you get paid through short term disability, and then the next six weeks, they would use their sick leave and their vacation, and they burn that all down.
There you go.
And if they wanted to come back earlier, they'd come back earlier.
So we can do that. We might propose three weeks.
That would mean they have to use their accruals.
Yeah.
Whatever accruals they have is what they would have to use.
Okay, but let's.
Federal mandate might change that, that we may not have a choice.
So hold on, I wanna make something clear, cause maybe I missed what you said, or, so if. They, they run through their short term disability, we're offering them two hundred and forty hours of maternity, paternity leave. If it's a woman, we're only paying the forty percent or whatever part of their wage that their short term disability wasn't paying.
Well, in in this situation, so because it's only, again, my my situation is different, my short term disability was a hundred percent. I didn't, I didn't.
No, I think he's right. I think we're confused. You're making it more complicated.
That would be.
Right.
That's where the bank comes in, where you'd wanna have some of your, you would want some of your bank to help supplement to make me whole.
So you can use that one twenty, two forty, whatever we come up with, to close that gap of sixty percent to your normal salary.
But what I'm getting at though is that two forty, two forty's the total, so, you know, if, say it's. You know, that, that, that sixty percent that the, that the, uh, short term disability is going to pay also comes out of that two forty. That's not a separate entity.
Well, this, remember, the short term disability is insurance. This is, this is different. This is just a city benefit.
You're not following.
I don't think they should, no. I personally don't think that we should offer that benefit with with that. I think it's one of the other.
Yeah, you can't.
Of not having short term disability, yes, we need to have, we need to have maternity and paternity benefits, definitely maternity, because again, it's, it would be. Um, what's the word? Discriminatory. So, but in lieu of that, again, with this mandate, you really need to find out what this mandate says, cause maybe it says, this mandate says, if you offer.
I thought we were doing short term and long term. I thought that's what this whole thing was about.
That's next.
It is, that's next.
Yeah.
That, some of these things were in, if we don't change anything, we should do that.
I don't know if I would have said it that, okay.
I don't know about this last part. I I wasn't familiar with this last.
So I, I'm, I'm going under the assumption that we're doing this in addition to short term, long term disability. Yeah, and the returning. So, so what does the short term, long term disability leave us moral to? Well, if, if, um, an employee comes in and they have, haven't had the opportunity to build up a very large bank. Then, um, the short term will will cover them up to sixty percent of their normal, their normal pay. So. We could use what little bank that they have, or, or and, we could use a maternity, paternity leave. Which is what's being proposed, and then they could use that to make their salary whole for whatever hours you guys come up with.
Where I was trying to get with this, guys, is if the short term disability is gonna pay sixty percent of it. Then the actual cost of this two four forty hours is, we're only paying forty percent of it anyway. Cause the insurance is gonna pay the sixty percent.
You can't double dip.
He's using it to close the gap.
Not that big gap. That, that's just a misnomer. I went, I went through, I went through and looked at my taxes and everything. And I, I bring home seventy percent of what I, what I. Uh, earned, and we're talking sixty percent, it's just a ten percent gap. And you're talking like you're gonna go bankrupt.
You can't double, you also can't double dip. I can't use my three weeks, my two hundred and forty hours from here and do short term disability at the same time. You can't do that. So it's not like you're getting two paychecks. It's not like you're getting a paycheck from the city.
Even if the one paycheck is used to make. Forty is forty.
You're either getting your paycheck from here from using your returning leave.
I, I. Disagree, I don't know where you're getting that from.
Or short term disability.
You have to send a lot of documentation that meant you're awful work.
What's the payout? What's the, what's our proposal for maternity?
This says here, maternity, they get six weeks or six weeks for C-section. That is not, that's paid by the short term disability company, but it's not called disability. It's just maternity.
That's addition, in it, virtually in addition to disability, short term disability.
I would say, yes.
Not for C-section only, you said?
You get four weeks for.
Six weeks for regular birth or six weeks for C-section, either.
I can change that.
Okay, so if we adopt that next, that's a, that's a payout. For maternal care, maternity.
Maternity, yes.
But not for the father.
How come they can get away with?
The mother? That's a whole other discussion. Okay, I don't know where we're at now. We were doing great till we talked about. I like what Jerry said. If we offer anything, maternity, paternity, a hundred and twenty hours, it seems like a reasonable start.
I'll second that.
I don't know how it kicks in, when and what.
You draw a paycheck from the city, you can't get short term disability.
So the question is, if someone is using their short term disability, are they not allowed to get anything from the city?
Oh, I understood my conversation that they could be made whole by getting some sick leave. Uh, in addition to that disability, that's the way I understood.
Yeah, cause that's what I was thinking too.
So is short term, long term disability tax free, or is this tax?
It's tax free.
Tax free.
I, I don't know the answer.
If you're using sick bank to become whole, you're only gonna use, you can't make yourself better than what you were by working.
Well, that's true.
So if you're getting sixty percent. Tax free, you only need to get another ten percent to become whole.
I, I don't know what ten fifteens we would tax that.
That might be a couple hours. That might be one hour.
Something to look into, cause I'm not sure on that answer.
I guess I'll have to talk to the insurance. Okay, can we table this and bring it back one more time next week, next time? Or do you want it?
I'm hoping that our insurance.
I'm ready to jump, I really am. I liked a hundred and twenty hours.
So is the maternity, paternity, is that part of the resolution? All this is part of resolution.
Well, we haven't even got the resolution, yeah.
Trust me, we'll amend whatever's there. Just, you guys hammer it out, we will amend.
I was trying to hammer it out before we came up with this.
Yeah.
Sorry, Captain.
Guess my question is, could we table the maternity part, whether we? If we can't come to an agreement, can we table that and add that?
Is anybody? Maternity, paternity, is any?
It's covered. It's gonna be covered by the insurance. If you approve the disability, maternity is covered. I can, I can get pregnant, I can take six weeks off or whatever that says.
It doesn't cover the.
Right now, all they don't know is, am I gonna be able to fill the gap? Just as big as it was.
Okay, so, um, new revelation here, um. But maternity care is covered in the disability. Maternity care.
Right.
Well, Nick's gonna get.
Paternity is something different. That's not covered through disability insurance. That's just a benefit.
Could offer a hundred and twenty hours of paternity care.
I'm making motion, offer a hundred and twenty hour.
Segregating them from one.
But you're saying the woman's covered and the man isn't. That's what you're, paternity's not covered in a long term or short term. I thought we just covered pregnancies, not illness or injury. Are you making this a section? Sound like this is some battle of the sexes or something. What, what are we going on here?
Okay, so my latest.
You think, you think, you gone that.
Maternity leave's gonna be covered in the disability plan. We threw in a paternal leave in, tonight, right now, of a hundred and twenty hours. Father would get six, three weeks.
Four weeks.
Three weeks. Dad would get three weeks to do, take care of the baby. Does that seem fair? Mom is gonna get six weeks.
I just, I think it's pretty important, so I just, we, we have two people in the city who are gonna have babies, and so I think it's, uh, pretty important. That, well, their husbands are gonna be asking for time off, so I think it's pretty important that you make a decision and and stick with it. And I guess the way I thought it was gonna be, my officers were gonna take off, because the wife have a baby, had a baby. That they could use their back sick leave.
Can, they can.
And use their vacation.
They can.
And, but I wanted to clarify, you were talking about giving them three extra weeks. Plus that. In other words, three weeks you give them, are, are they given that beside their back sick leave?
Or in addition. It would be.
No.
You're, you're creating a, a new bank, a one, a hundred and twenty hours.
Time out, guys. You gotta figure out something about our payroll budget here. You can't be having these people take all this time off for babies. How you gonna cover those hours?
That's what I'm thinking. You get two employees and.
I mean, it sounds, it sounds nice, but I mean.
You get two employees from public works that have babies, and they both take off six weeks. Who's covering their work?
Right, and you're paying them. You're already paying them to not be there.
The time they can take off anyway, it's the question of is it gonna be paid or non-paid. So the, the challenge of workforce, we got anyway.
You don't have a choice. They can take, they can go take six weeks, whether we want to or not.
Right.
Right, they can.
Well, yeah, but we don't have to pay them. If we gotta pay somebody to sit at home, and then we gotta pay somebody to do their job. I mean, you, you can figure that out. That's on the work.
A lot of other places.
Still stick with my proposal of, uh, a hundred and twenty hours for paternal pay, pay leave. Five hundred and sixty hours or ninety-six hours a year capped at five sixty.
But I don't know why they need that.
We already discussed this.
No.
We got that figured out.
Made more than whole. If we're giving them short term and long term, and they're using sick time on top of that. They're being made more than whole.
But not everybody's gonna use a disability. They're only gonna use it if they have a catastrophic illness or injury. Gallbladder, hernia, pregnancy. Broken back, broken arm, broken leg. Those things don't happen. Regular sick leave, I have the flu. Stomach flu, I can't come to work. That's where the twelve hours is gonna come through to get them through. Right, the regular illnesses. Right, but I said, but yet you gotta keep it separate, cause there's sick leave and then there's, you're, you can't come to work.
All right, does someone wanna, can we put this in the form of a resolution?
But that's what I'm saying. I don't. To me, five hundred and sixty hours would be a catastrophic illness. So you, we're, have short term and long term. I, I don't understand why we need both to cover a catastrophic illness.
Seven hundred and sixty hours is seventy days. Short term disability is sixty. Long term disability can go up to like.
Right, if you're off for six months or more.
Yeah.
Right.
That's why, that's why it's off.
That's why, that's why it's offered.
Okay, so why do you need this five hundred and sixty hours?
Because maybe an employee's dad is sick and is dying and they have to take time off to take care of him.
Or a child gets sick.
The only thing that would make sense, might be a middle ground, is you can offer just long-term. You don't have to do both.
I'm tired of talking about, let's make a decision on this. I wanna propose a resolution then of, uh, we had a good start there. Take Tom's proposal here. Exactly what it says. We get down to maternity care, I would offer a hundred and twenty hours of paternal care. And then, right? Take this, this right here. It's everything we talked about. Plus a hundred and twenty hours of maternal care. Would anybody like to offer that as a resolution? I will. Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna read it out there. Resolution nineteen oh six. The way house is there. Under number one. You would accrue sick leave at the current rate of ninety-six hours, twelve days, with a maximum to be capped at five hundred and sixty hours. Unused sick leave will roll over to a maximum of five hundred and sixty hours, what I just said. No annual payout for hours not used above five hundred and sixty. No annual payout.
Is that for all employees now?
Yes.
We're switched to where.
For all employees.
For all employees, okay.
No annual.
No annual.
The retirement payout would be the fifty percent, twenty-five percent. Whatever an employee has. Um, not taking anything away. Those employees would continue to get their payout at fifty percent or twenty-five percent. New employees, after some date that we need to pick, will not be eligible for sick leave at retirement. So we wanna quit that retirement payout. And then paternity leave would be a hundred and twenty hours. I suppose accrued immediately on hiring. Or is there a six-month probationary period?
Well, there's a probationary period, but I don't know what you wanna do about a granting a paternity leave. I guess that's a constant decision.
Just keep it simple.
Six.
When I started.
At higher.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, at higher, they can use that.
Yeah.
That is resolution nineteen oh six.
As amended.
So what's in our tablets?
The boardroom says we offer short-term.
Yeah. Yeah, you do wanna add that. You, you do wanna add this plan provides for short-term and long-term in life insurance.
Well, that's what we're gonna vote on that now.
Right. I guess Nick is saying, do you wanna have that discussion now, just make it all part of the?
No, no.
No, I thought it already was. I just thought.
Okay, no, that's, that's next discussion. Hopefully, we will, I'm thinking, approve that.
It's on the resolution.
Nineteen oh six?
Step four.
Or resolution eighteen ninety-nine?
Step four says.
Okay, we can leave that there.
We had, we had the discussion where somebody, a couple of people didn't wanna do short-term long-term disability, we were gonna give them a bank.
No, that's not on the table.
It already is. It says step four, it's on the resolution, that's for killing it. It literally says step four, would provide short-term and long-term disability at the expense of the employer.
But you, you.
On the resolution.
Through your amendment.
Yes.
It is there, but with your amendment, you don't have to put that in there if you wanna deal with it on the next, on the next side, on the next agenda item.
Okay, that's what I was saying, we either strike it out.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. And have it, or we're gonna have another, we already started to talk.
Okay, so we got a motion to approve in a second. We need to go over it one more time.
The only stick that you run into now, not to throw a wrench into, but we're not gonna talk about short-term, long-term disability till next meeting.
No, no, to next.
Okay, next item.
My only problem there is, if it's the next item and we decide not to, now all of a sudden, any woman that works here no longer has any sort of maternity leave besides FMLA. So the guy, and so now the dad now gets paid leave and the, and the woman does not. If we don't approve the next one, that's why I was bringing it up, because we can't just.
I'm telling you right now, I'm approving one, not both.
You're no vote on the long-term, short-term.
Depends on whether this passes. If this passes, this passes, then I'm a no on the long and short-term disability.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, then you're running the risk of getting maternity leave and no maternity.
I don't think you deserve, I don't think you need both. You should not need both.
We got three votes for the next one.
That's the question.
Short-term, long-term.
Guys are getting maternity leave and women aren't getting anything.
Then we need to vote for the next one also. It needs to pass.
That's what I'm saying. And I, now I'm not saying there, it can go either way.
Why did I ask for this job?
I don't really wanna get it done, but like this is simple. I mean, is there any way?
Can we roll them together?
Not to.
There's still a no.
Not to play it, but would it make sense to have somebody who actually understands insurance?
If we roll them together, you might not get either one.
Right. I'm not an insurance expert. I can say what I, two jobs I've had in my life, what I've had. Know if you can offset short-term with paternity leave or maternity leave from a company. I don't know that answer. I don't think you can, but I'm, that's me. I don't know. Is there any way we can actually have somebody know what in the world we're talking about?
You can make a resolution to give, to give a father a paternity leave.
I know, I get that.
You just did.
We haven't voted on it yet.
We haven't voted on it yet.
I'm saying a separate one. So if, say, say this fails and we go with just long-term, short-term, then we can add a resolution for paternity leave.
I don't know, I don't think anybody knows the ins and outs of maternity, paternity leave and short-term and long-term disability. I'm not an expert.
I would vote yes if we did, we just voted on sick leave policy without maternity, paternity leave and the short-term, long-term disability. I'd vote on those two separate measures. But by throwing something in there that we don't, we don't get, or we don't know if we're cloud competitive, we are with, we might be better than the federal government. We don't even know how theirs works. But I'm just gonna vote no for the whole shit.
That's kinda where I, if we just strength, we can talk about maternity and paternity later.
Do that another day.
If we want to. Pass this without it.
Alright.
Talk about short-term. If we wanna bring up maternity, maternity leave back later, we can have that discussion. And we can move on. And we can move on.
Okay, we're gonna do that.
I don't think anybody understands.
We're gonna bring it up another day. We're not gonna let it die though.
No, and it needs to be brought up next time.
I just, I can only speak from obviously my side.
Let's get something done.
I know I get four weeks, but I don't know how it works on other woman. I never. I don't know how that works.
Yep. No more babies. Babies are off the table. Everybody understand what we're voting on now?
No.
No payout at sick leave, no payout at retirement. No payout.
For new hires or everyone?
New hires only. New hires only.
Or retirement.
Any existing employee gets exactly what they got coming to them when they retire.
No annual payout.
And more, and no more annual payout. That's it.
Okay.
That's it.
Five sixties.
It's the Dean option minus the paternity, fraternity.
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Goldman. Miller.
Yes.
Goodwiler.
Yes.
Alright, let's talk about, uh, insurance. So we've had this proposal before us many times, twice now, I think. Um, resolution eighteen ninety-nine.
Come on.
Sweet. Second, Nick will second. Um, we've talked about, any, any discussion? Let's vote, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Goodwiler.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Goldman?
No.
Dean?
Yes.
Alright, can I ask the next time we choose it? I'll put on the agenda right now, just put it on red on this one, see, put it on that one. We're gonna talk about maternity, paternity leave and bringing the experts you think might help with that.
Okay, so in other words, we need to know what they're gonna do. If we don't know what they're gonna do, then why should we bring it back next time?
Well, because times have taken. I mean, we gotta figure something out. We don't have to match them.
No.
I mean, if we can come up with a decent plan.
It's an existing benefit as is, a lot of insurance companies.
You know?
I just don't know whether or not he can compensate his paternity leave, compensate the other forty percent in short-term.
I think we probably.
That I don't, I have no idea. I'm not a, I know what I get where I work, but I'm not a woman, so I have.
I know what I get where I work. I know what I get where I work. Alright, administrative report.
Yes. Well, I'd like to acknowledge, um, councilperson Dean's leadership in helping us through this recent process. He takes a lot of things on himself and worked with the staff to hammer a tough issue through. So, um, I just wanted to give him kudos out loud on that one. Alright, um, yeah. Um, uh, we've been kind of doing this Zoom, uh, for our audience and, uh, we've been practicing social. A lot of those things are starting to be alleviated and when we first started talking about that, we were saying we would, uh, kinda check and see how we felt about that in, uh, in July. Uh, so that, our, our next meeting's in July sixth, so if there's any, um, desire to get more normal or we're comfortable with how we're doing it now, um, looking for some, maybe some feedback on how we should go about our next meetings or our next couple of meetings.
Let's say through the end of June, we stay where we are, July.
End of July, take it out another month.
No, I'm ready for this whole thing to be over.
I haven't heard, um, much negative feedback on the way we're doing it now. I think, uh, uh, Gregory from the newspaper uh, called and, and he thought it was a good idea that we're still doing it this way. I don't know if other cities are still doing it this way, but um, basically, we're edging over ten people in, in the meeting, but I think that those numbers have been alleviated a bit to, I think, maybe fifty now, if I heard. And I'm not, I'm trying to. So. But if that, if I'm hearing consensus, basically, if I'm not hearing any objections, I'm thinking everybody's okay with going into the end of month of, of going to the end of July.
Stay the course.
Stay the course. Okay. Alright, uh, so, uh, I think you probably all know, but, uh, the, uh, final report for the building is in and I've gotten an official word that we are going to, uh, get reimbursed, uh, at the fifty thousand eight hundred and ninety number, which is good cuz we were, um, a little, uh, questionable with if the rock was going to be counted and if we had to get it off the site and all those kinda things. And they worked with us and allowed us to uh, use a, a letter from, um, Bruce to say that, uh, the purchase of the rock, so that counted for, um, the rock that we hadn't weighed and we, uh, we had, uh, the, the way tickets were accepted. And so everything went really well. Um, they were really impressed with the project and, uh, wanted us to keep them in the loop cuz it sounds like they wanna kinda highlight us in, in their, uh, future, uh, um, meetings with the legislature to get more money for the program and things of that nature. So, um, uh, so that went well. Uh, we still, still have some rock sales to go. Um, there's about five thousand tons still there. Um, and so we have received about, uh, ten thousand dollars, uh, from those rock sales. So I would expect that we would obviously another twenty thousand dollars and some change on the remaining rock sales. So with, uh, all in all, we, um, um, we're gonna come out pretty decent, so.
Well, I just used almost seven hundred tons.
Metal's gonna use a lot more than that.
Good.
I thought it was eight thousand.
Sixty-seven or something.
Yeah, just under seven thousand tons.
Less than seven.
What did you just use?
Seven hundred, almost seven hundred tons.
So I had a little note. I'm not gonna go into a lot of details because of the, um, potential of affecting, um, some of our real estate decisions, but um, I got, did get, have a conversation with Chad, the developer on the VP site, and, um, he's very interested to see how we work our, 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 uh, creek widening, um, project, uh, cuz he believes it may affect his project as well. So, Chad, yeah. So, yeah, and I think, um, I think B and K had the, had another big council of the meeting and wanted to push it back again.
Um, June eighteen, July eighteen was.
July eighteen's the new date.
Pushed it back a.
Yeah, so. Talk about food pantry. Um, oh, and, uh, tomorrow, I'm hoping to get that wastewater, uh, grant, um, application in. It's gonna be approximately five million dollars that we're going after. We would have, uh, the, a match that we would do. But, um, basically, the, the rate increases that we've already approved should cover our match. So we, um, we'll put that in. It's, uh, hopefully, it will go in tomorrow, if not, certainly this week. It's been, it's a lot of pieces to it. So I don't wanna speak a hundred percent sure, but we're getting sure, we're getting close. So I think the main thing now is to make sure that we've mastered the federal, uh, the federal website on, uh, how to put in the application because that was there. So, yeah, that's pretty much what I got.
Okay. Kevin Olson?
No, I think I'll pass.
Well, we got another hour yet.
Nah, it's past my bedtime.
Any other staff, Melissa, Matt? Gordon?
Yes, unfortunately. I was reviewing our workers' comp and discovered I had not submitted the projected salary. So that, that was needed for creating the billing for us. And our, um, we're going to receive an amended work comp bill, about thirty-eight hundred dollars higher, something like that. It'll be twenty-one thousand nine hundred per. twenty-one thousand nine hundred versus eighteen thousand two hundred.
So you, you went down to eighteen from what was it?
It was eighteen, last year was maybe about the same, I don't remember, a little higher or lower. But this year, because our salaries are going up about one hundred and some thousand dollars. The rates are the same, it's just because our salaries are higher, we're going to pay a little bit more. So I need, needed to tell you, and we may come back to you with a
Amendment?
Amendment, or we'll just, I can just run it through as an approval, or as a claim, and you can prove it that way too, if that's accepted.
The auditor might like an amendment, budget amendment.
I, I don't know that the auditor really cares, as long as, as long as you folks, I made a word of it.
Whatever makes it easy.
Okay, I'll just run a claim through.
Um, okay, Melissa, did you have something?
I'm mute.
Melissa.
I'm mute.
No, I would just prefer to talk myself right now, sorry about that.
You are.
So I thought I'd just take a couple minutes to address, I know there was some concerns about the softball, um, and what we were doing to alleviate that, um, those were rental, anything that's happening at the softball complex right now are rentals that had been on the books, um, for quite a while, so we are not organizing them, they're just kind of like kind of like Bronnic Parks open for rentals, and Town Hall, and things like that. Um, so some things that we're doing though, because they make me nervous also, I won't, I won't lie to you about that. Um, we're encouraging everybody to drive themselves, we removed all of the bleachers, so everybody's required to sit in their own chairs. We encourage social distancing, um, whether or not they choose to do that, that's that's not something I necessarily police and patrol, we can't have concessions, we can't have a drinking fountain up and running. We sanitize the bathrooms, we go through and sanitize the bathrooms every hour in hopes to alleviate that, we only opened two of the three fields during tournaments, so that we're not at capacity, even though now we can be at hundred percent capacity. So we're, we're trying to alleviate that as much as possible. I know there were concerns, and, and I have talked with the neighbors, and there is parking up and down the street, and um, I guess I can't really do anything about that, I'm encouraging people to drive themselves and to not carpool. So, and I'm, we always will have a staff member on site, um, or working that day to, like I said, we're doing the bathrooms all the time, and to be there to help with the things that need to be helped with, and, um, any issues. So we just, you know, we just work less during the week, so we can make up for it on the weekends. And the calendar is a bit online, so anybody can look at the calendar, and they can also click to see what's open if they wanted to reserve times. So that's the weekends, and then during the day, we have, during the week, we have at least five teams that are consistently practicing on the field, at least twice a week, sometimes more, so the field's being used a lot.
They look, they look good too, they look really good.
Yeah.
Is parking been an issue?
It, it was on the first Sunday, and it probably will be this weekend too, I mean, it's, it's not really an issue, because there, everybody's parking le- um, legally, there wasn't, there was nobody blocking driveways, we had a couple people who moved their car from the parking lot after a foul ball, hit the car next to them to Crestview, but we we asked them to move, and then they found another place, so there is, and we're hoping to open up from grass parking, but it's still pretty wet, so we don't want to necessarily do that either.
So if that becomes more, an issue, if it, and the summer and next summer, we may have to think about.
How do they get to the grass? Have to go over the.
We have to, we have it locked off right now, and then we put the bleachers there also, so that people can't park down there, it would be in the lower.
That becomes an issue, we have to think about doing something on that.
Can you make street parking residential for, yeah, people that live there all night?
Well, we have, like, if you see Lions Field, you know, um, when we have games and things at Lions Field, people are parked all up in the residential there, or for a football game, so I don't know, I mean, it's your choice, of course, I don't know if you can do that, but that would, um, cause some issues for a lot of different events in town.
Okay, thank you. Um, anything from, uh, mayor and council?
I see it on the list. For Matt, it said, uh, so this is for Matt Goodell. That there was gonna be some sign replacements, and I'm hoping that the city limit sign coming in on Downey is one of those signs.
We, yeah, the sign on the north end of town on Downey, and the one on East Main, both of them, those wood posts wore out, both of those are gonna be replaced. They're probably gonna be replaced with something more that has like the new logo on it, that doesn't just say City of West Branch, so it'll be a little nicer sign, but yeah, that's that's one of them that'll be coming up, um, other than that, it's ones that we've had uh, like, no parking signs and some other things, right now, we're kind of waiting until the next budget to buy too many more signs though, because we're already over our sign budget, so.
Thank you. The city limit sign will land over on its side, all bent up, that's.
Yeah, and.
Cut out of there.
Nevin went out and snaked it up, and then it fell over again, so, I mean, we can take it out. And, or we can put a longer post in next to it, we just, we're gonna put a new one in, but, I mean, yeah, it doesn't look very good.
Thank you.
Alright.
You're welcome.
Um, I got nothing. Motion to adjourn, anyone?
Someone.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Alright.